Good afternoon. I'd like to call the special board meeting to order, please. And welcome, everybody. Thank you for all being here. And now I'd like to ask the clerk to call the robe.
Vera Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Here.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown and Paige.
Present.
Valina Nguyen.
Here.
Stacy Agar.
Okay, now I'll take an emotion for the approval of the special agenda.
A so moved that we accept the special agenda.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments? All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so order it. Thank you. Communications? I'll say them for tomorrow. We'll go right on. Now, board discussion, review of surveys. And I will turn this over.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Glad to be with you again. I'd like to say that I brought the weather from New Jersey. I listened to your forecast and I figured the weather was already here. But it's nice. Brenda and I were talking. This is one of the nicest days we've had.
That Brenda?
In Jersey, and you've had... Yes. Yeah, this Brenda. Thank you. But again, thank you for taking time from your busy schedules once again so we can continue the process. And do the ultimate goal is to bring some good people to you so you can make an informed decision as to who will be your next superintendent of schools. We had several people complete the survey. One was 500, what's this?
The district review packet that you have in front of you. That's the one where the community staff could go online and talk about the district and their perceptions of the district. And I think there were 500 and some respondents.
Seventy-six.
Yeah, 576. So that's just a good piece of information for the district. As you think about your goals going forward, this is just, you know, another tool in your toolkit to assess what the community is thinking about the district. About the condition of the facilities, the educational programming, the safety aspects of going to school. It's just great information for you as a board. We don't do anything more with it other than just give it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the bottom line of tonight's meeting is for hopefully you guys will look at the flyer we're going to go through, but starting with the end of mine. You have a flyer in front of you.
Do they?
No.
Do I have them all?
Oh, you don't have it all?
We don't have it.
Sorry about that. You're going to have it now.
Okay. You have the flyer. And this is what we use mainly for advertising. We'll go to our 170 associates and go to places like AASA Education, wherever you decided to advertise. And there are two parts to the flyer. On the front page, you see district information, photos of kids and staff members. It's a nice... I'm a musician, so I like the photo of the band. You know, I was drumming Asian in college, so when I see that, it kind of reminds me of back in the day. But those are the photos we got. And then we talk about the district on the front side. On the back side, if you look to your left, the profile of the ideal superintendent. That is what came from our meetings with you, board members, with community, with stakeholders, regarding what they like in superintendents. What we're going to do, we're going to go through this. I'm going to ask Brenda if she would go through this with you so to make sure that you understand how we came about these criteria for superintendent.
And you actually have like 14 bullet points here, so we'll probably want to condense that down to 10 versus the 14, and we can talk about that.
Right. And then the main thing that we'd like, the two things that hopefully we can vote on, you guys can vote on tonight, is the flyer, because it has to be approved by the board, and also the timeline.
Salary range.
And the salary. You have three things. The timeline, the flyer, and the salary range. We talked about the salary before, but on the flyer, if you notice, it says zero salary, but we got to have numbers in there for the salary. So those are the main three things that we need to vote on in terms of salary. Okay? And again, this is open, so you can ask us questions back and forth. Are we going to begin going through the survey themes, results? Brenda's going to go over that, and we can talk back and forth and ask questions to make sure you understand. Any questions before we begin? Thank you. Hello. How are you?
Good. Well, we're going to give you now... This is small print, but you know, you had the online survey, the 30 qualities survey. And we have extra copies if you want extra copies, but as soon as you get one, we'll go over those.
Yes.
You need to see it in front of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That wasn't done deliberately, so...
Okay.
Remember, there were two surveys. This review. This is...
Thank you.
This is the...
Maxine. Maxine.
Oh, yeah.
Have you had to use your pen today?
Yeah. Yeah. Because the other ones that...
Why did I give it to you?
Sometimes people... Sometimes they just, you just don't know why. So on this survey, the 30 qualities survey that you have in front of you, you had 839 people respond. So if you turn the page, this is the raw score sheet. And look at the top. You see qualities desired in a new superintendent, and you see a row of numbers, 1 through 30. Do you see that on the left-hand side?
Yes.
Okay, the next column is teachers. In parentheses, how many teachers responded?
441.
441. That is by far your largest group. Then you'll see administrators, you had 72, support staff, 205, parents. You only have 47 parents, which is unfortunate, because usually the parent group is the larger group. So unfortunately, we didn't get that many parents responding to this survey. You did have 39 students, though, which is a good number, because students don't always think this is something that they want to respond to, so that was a good number. Your non-parent community members, you had 28 of those, and of course, seven board members. So if you added those numbers across, you'd see that you have 839 people responded to your survey. Okay? Which is, that's a good number. I mean, we'd like to have more, but that's a good number to start with. So what you have on this sheet is, look at teachers, 441 teachers column. Do you see that column? Okay, on one side, on the left side, you see a raw number. That's 219 teachers ranked that number seven, that very first quality. So you're going to ask yourself, well, what is that first quality? Go all the way to the right. We gave you shorthand on this sheet. Read all the way across the page. Number one was willing to listen to input but is a decision maker. So you just do a little bit of shorthand to kind of remind yourself what those qualities are. So for us, for RAINN associates, we don't really need to know how many people responded, because if you've got a group of 441, that's going to skew the weight of their responses. What we want to know is rank. How were these qualities ranked by each group? So turn your page one more time. These are the rankings. And this is the sheet that we will talk to you about as we build the profile of the next superintendent. So, do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
All right. So let's look at the composite rank. Is, it's called combined ranking. So go all the way over, past teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, all the way over. You see a total, and then you see a combined ranking. Okay, so that combined ranking is the order of priority that these 30 qualities were ranked in. So do you find number one in that combined ranking column? Number one, we are recommending you use it on your profile because that was the top quality. That quality is, has leadership skills to respond to opportunities and challenges of ethnic and cultural diversity. Do you see that as you read that across? So that was by far the top criteria. So we would recommend that be a quality on your superintendent profile. So let's find number two. Where's number two?
Number 15.
Go all the way down. It's number 15. Yep. And that says is strongly committed to student-first philosophy in all decisions. So do you see how this works?
Yes.
Okay. So let's find number three. Number three's at the very bottom.
Number three.
Yeah. Promotes a positive and professional environment for district employees and the board. Now, we recommend that you combine that with number eight, which was also highly ranked. It was number six. It's very similar. Has experience recruiting and maintaining exceptional staff in the district and schools. So would you like to go through all the ones we've recommended based on the rankings? And we'll just go down. The next one that we recommended is quality number five. It was ranked number four, and it says inspires trust, self-confidence, and models high standards. So would you agree that these are probably the ones you would have thought people would choose? I mean, it's probably not surprising, is it?
No.
Good. Okay. So number eight, we've talked about that. Has experience recruiting and maintaining exceptional staff for the district and schools. Okay, look at number nine. That was ranked 13, but the board ranked it as number four. It has ability to build consensus and commitment among individuals and groups. So that's part of that decision-making management style, so that was highly ranked. Look at number 11. We also recommend that. Ability to delegate authority while maintaining accountability. So you want a superintendent who's willing to do that. And then look at number 13. It's ranked number seven, and we combine it with number one. And this is possessing excellent people skills and presents a positive district image. Okay? The next one, number 15. Strongly committed to student-first philosophy. We already talked about that. And then look at number 20. It was the 10th highest criteria. Promotes positive student behavior. If you go across to your left, you'll see that teachers ranked that fifth highest, administrator 16, support staff 10, parents 5th. So you see how they pretty consistently ranked it high. And then as you slip on down to number 27 of our list, number 12 ranked is, possesses the ability to enhance student performance. That's your achievement, closing the achievement gap criteria. And then number 29 is something that you might want to consider. The board ranked it ninth, and teachers ranked it ninth. Knowledge of emerging research in the area of curriculum and instructional design. Now, we've given you a cheat sheet that has all of these listed, so you don't have to read that tiny, tiny print. We're going to give this to you. We wanted you to go through it and see how it's ranked.
That helps.
It really does. Is there anything about those criteria that you found alarming or that you didn't... This is the... This is your cheat sheet. This is what you really want.
Thank you.
Because you can read it so much easier. But we wanted you to see how we compiled the information. That's why it was important to go through that. So if anybody says to you, well, how did they come up with that? You can show them the spreadsheet that we used and how it was ranked by each group. So there's your accountability. All right, so these are the recommendations based on what we just went through. Is there anything in that list you don't agree with? And those are the top 10? Yes.
I agree with it, and I guess on a financial piece, I would prefer that they come in with a PhD or a EDD instead of us including in the contract, that we would assist them in getting a PhD.
Now, what are you looking at?
Well, here on the list, number four, and I know it wasn't a big thing on everybody's...
Well, it wasn't even recommended.
Wasn't recommended.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just thinking...
Right.
I would like to say it's recommended, because money is funny.
Sure.
And in the previous contract, it was in there that they would assist the person to get a PhD.
So here's what we could do under the requirements for the position. If you wanted to, you could say a PhD or EDD preferred.
Yeah.
I mean, you could always add that. That's simple.
Okay.
And a lot of districts do that. That's easy to do.
Is that something you want, board members?
Board members in...
Oh, yes. Most definitely.
That an EDD or PhD would be preferred?
Yes. I'd probably flip a coin to see if it's required.
I wouldn't require it, because you limit the pool to the point where you're not going to get enough applicants. Sometimes people are working on their doctorate right now, or their ABD. So if you say required, then you have limited a pool of 60 down to 15.
You can always say ABD.
First, I know, I know a...
But that's a different discussion.
Yeah. But I know a superintendent in the South, I don't name the city, who's doing an excellent job, who does not have a PhD. And the issue was that she's been working so hard and getting things done that she didn't take time to go back to school. But we understand what you're saying. We want to search now where people... And we do say preferred. And we think preferred, we would certainly look at people, and most of the people who apply for this, this is larger than 10,000 students, they have their doctors.
I'd say 99% of them do.
Yes.
It's very rare that they don't.
Yes.
All right. Well, so we look at our cheat sheet again. In the top 10, are there any there you don't agree with? Because these were the top 10 from your 30 qualities survey with 839 respondents. And then the other three at the bottom are ones that you could consider if you wanted to, but it just adds more criteria to that flyer that we've been looking at. So are the three at the bottom that we put consider on, they were ranked somewhere between 10 and 15, but they weren't in the top 10. How important is it? Or is it just something that you could use as an interview question versus a quality on the flyer?
Okay, I was looking at the statement up under recommend. Third from the bottom, is strongly committed to student-first philosophy in all decisions. And then looking at consider, the second one, to combining those two together.
Yes, you could very easily.
Where it's promoting positive student behavior.
Yes. That's a nice blend. So she's taking...
Is strongly committed to a student-first philosophy. Of the time. And... And then go down to the bottom to the middle. Promotes positive student behavior. Combine those two together.
Just say "and promotes positive student behavior." Yeah. Excellent suggestion. Gold star. Any other thoughts on the considers that you think are essential? You've got 10 really good qualities, and we'll use that to filter applications. You know, we'll look for people that embody that profile. Now, whether or not somebody has legislative, you know, acumen, I don't know how important that is on a day-to-day basis.
They'll learn.
They'll learn, yeah. All right. So do you feel comfortable then with our top 10?
Yes.
And pulling up the positive student behavior and adding it? Now, here's the next question I'm going to ask you. These are not in any particular order, other than the order of the quality on our ranking sheet. Do you want to reorder these? I mean, do you want one to pop up to the top more than another on the flyer? They're just in the order they are in our 30 qualities list.
I'm okay with it.
Are you good with this order? Okay. Simple. All right. And so we will add on the flyer that a PhD or a EDD is preferred, and we'll combine that. Now, probably the next thing we want to talk about is salary range, don't you think?
Yes, we need to...
We need that for the flyer.
Yes.
Before you move forward, where are these on here?
They're in your bullet points.
So they're under, do they replace?
It, that's a draft. That flyer is a draft.
So they're under the profile?
Yep, they're under the profile.
So replaces this. This is draft.
Yep. Because we even added three considerations in there, just in case. I want to make sure we have enough space on the flyer. So the profile of the ideal superintendent on the flyer is where these qualities now will show up. We'll list them right there.
Now, we talked the last time, excuse me, about a salary. We prefer a salary, however, some boards decide that they would like to go with a salary range. Okay? But certainly, we would continuously say this is your search. But you need to talk about a range. I think when we talked, we heard either board members or somebody say, one of you said a salary between 225 and 250. That's pretty right, Dwayne, but however, if you want that, if you want to say... Anytime you do a salary, it has to do with the experience a person has. You know, if a person comes in and they happen showing themselves and have the experience necessary for the job, you say, well, listen, we may pay that person 227. But if a person has the worth of the experience, you say, well, we pay that person 240, 245. So when you have a range, it doesn't mean that you got to go to the max of that range or even the minimum of that range. You just look somewhere in between based on, because some of these people will come from districts larger than yours. Some will come and they're making 250 already. Some people decide they want to come back to Kansas and maybe work in New York as an example. So I will take whatever salary. But that's up to you in terms of the range, but we really strongly urge you to come up with a salary range or a salary. And it always says negotiable. So, Madam President, I don't know if you want to just have a conversation?
Any thoughts?
Ask the board members?
I really like the range, and I'll tell you why. If we don't, if we don't make it a requirement for them to have the PhD, then we have, you know, some room to provide a little incentive for them to...
Okay.
I want to circle back on that for a minute. I was trying to double-check. The board actually has a policy in the job description that's adopted right now for the superintendent that does require a PhD for the position. So if you're not going to require that, the board's going to have to take some action to change that job description. So I'm not trying to complicate things, but I know we have it in place already. We do have some minimum requirements for the position that the board has adopted, and one of those is a PhD or a doctorate, so...
Can they be in the process?
Not...
No.
Not according to your job description right now.
They have to have it.
So if that is a direction you guys are wanting to go, you are going to need to, by motion, modify your job description at some point.
Would it be possible just to have some copies so they can see?
Yeah, I just pulled it out of my folder here. There were no copies.
How long has that policy been in effect, my eyes?
Well, the prior, I was looking back at the prior versions, and I'm going back all the way to 2007, and it's in the 2007 job description, which is slightly different than the current one. So it's been there for a while, for 10 years or more.
So I'll give you an example of why that would have been difficult in two of the most recent searches I've done. In Olafah, if you recall, they hired John, his name is a...
Allison.
Allison, thank you. From Wichita. John does not have a doctorate. He's working on it, and he'll have it within 12 months, if not sooner, but he didn't have a doctorate when they hired him. But he had the experience of being the superintendent of the largest school district in Kansas and had been there for nine years. So, and he didn't finish his doctorate because he had moved around from, he started in Shawnee Mission, and then he went to Texas, to Grapevine, Texas. And so his hours didn't transfer, so he stopped working on his doctorate. Then he moved to Pennsylvania to be a superintendent. Nothing transferred. Then he came to Wichita, and he was going to have to start all over again, which he did, but he didn't get it done. And so he's still working on it. And he's probably 12 months away, if not a little less than that. So there's an example of a quality superintendent who did not have a doctorate when they offered him the position. And I've got another, we've got another fellow who is a superintendent in Rochester, Minnesota. He's been a superintendent for many, many, many years, and his board said, we don't care whether or not you finish your doctorate, we want you to go through the AASA Urban Superintendent's Academy, because that is a very rigorous and prestigious experience. And so he did that. He's going to start back on his doctorate. But see, there's an example of how that really limits your pool of quality candidates if you keep that as a requirement. But in your instance, you'd have to change your job description.
What policy is that?
It's a, it's a job... I sent you guys an email on it.
Job description? That's not in the policies?
It's not in the policies, it's in your job description.
Gotcha.
So I was trying to find it on here, and I was having trouble, but I'll show you when you come in. But yeah, I sent the job description to everybody back on January 22nd. You should have an email on it, although it's been a while, so...
So what would be the protocol to change that? Just make a motion?
You would, you would make a motion to modify the job description, but I think you'd want to be thoughtful and make sure you've got everything in place, that you want to make that modification, so if that makes sense.
And you'd have to do it in a regular board meeting.
Regular board meeting.
Susan, say extra copies.
And of course, I left the first page on. Sorry.
What'd you say?
So you left the first page on.
When I gave it to her to make copies, one of the pages didn't go through. It's just got essential functions. The qualifications are on the second page, the first page is out. Did you guys get a copy of it? Yeah, it's simple. There's no rush on it. It's just the essential function. So I don't think that's necessary for what we're doing, but everybody went along with the conversation. So if you guys are wanting to do that, then what we would do is make that as a change to the qualifications, and you just have to vote on that change in the next board meeting. We can put it on the agenda, probably still for tomorrow. I'm in the agenda to have that. You've got other...
Now, what, Susan, making a copy of?
The front page. I didn't give her the front page, and she made copies for it. It just has the essential functions of the job.
Oh, okay.
It's not the same thing. So, and I'm just throwing this out there, maybe the consultants went away on this, you have other minimum qualifications that you require, whether those are minimum qualifications that the consultants, which you get, modify, or whatever. I don't...
Right. So we were just talking about that. It's, you're very specific on your qualifications on this job description. Minimum three years as a teacher, three years as a building administrator, and three years as a district-wide administrator. Sometimes you have folks who've been superintendents for many, many years who didn't have three years as a principal. They might have just had two and then moved to central office. Or it's possible, it's not, it's just, you just limit your pool, again, when you get real specific on those background experiences and qualifications. If you keep three years as a teacher, three years as a building administrator, three years as a district-wide administrator, we have to put that on our brochure as a requirement, because I'm not sure everybody could need that.
What you're saying, remove it or add preferred, what is...
Well, again, again, as Brenda said, we suggest, and it's only suggesting, we don't recommend, we suggest that you look at this policy and revamp it, so your pool will be wide enough that you're going to, because it's a national search. Depending on what state you're in, for example, I know people that were a teacher for a year and a half, they were so good, they went to be the principal. And they were a principal for two years and became an assistant superintendent. So those people who are some good people, they would be left out according to this criteria you have, the qualifications you have.
Are these small districts, school districts?
No, some of them are large, some of them are large districts. The ones specifically I'm talking about is in the South, in Georgia. The ones specifically I'm talking about is, is in the South in Georgia where the superintendent is a female without a doctorate. And, and she's been there after some issues, and she's doing a fantastic, she's had a fantastic job in there. And the reason for not having a doctorate is that, you know, "I moved around, I did this, and I just didn't take the time to go, to go back and complete." So a lot of the issues, but as we said, most of the people, 95, 95, 99% of the people will have the qualifications, the doctorate. But how we're getting into the two or three years, I mean, three years of teacher, three years of building administrator, that will really narrow the pool as well. So that's what we're saying. And as a matter of fact, in the searches that I've done over the last eight years, I've never seen these requirements. But we do look at, when we look at the application, we look at what the person's done over the past years. So you will see the person who's been a teacher for 10 years, been a principal for four years. We look at all that stuff in terms of who you may want to bring to the table without it being a requirement. Because if you have an exceptional person, then you want that person may have, may not have these, all of these.
Well, from looking at this, are there others that conflict with what we've already established?
No, those are just pretty specific.
Right.
The rest are more general, you know?
Right.
Integrity, fairness, honesty.
Just these four minimums.
You only have four, they have four bulletins that are very specific, yes.
Well, what about must reside in the school district? Are they saying that after?
Yeah.
Yeah, they give, we give them so much time to come in.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if they did.
That's pretty typical, too.
That's pretty typical, after a year or so, we want you to be a part of the community.
Right.
So Greg, what would be the process? Would we just come back with modifications and submit them to you, or what is your...
Well, it's your job description, so if you want to make changes to the qualifications for the superintendent position, then what you would do is, you tell them to me, I'll type them in the document, I think Susan probably got the document, so, but, and those would be proposed changes, and you guys would move and adopt those at a regular board meeting, is what you would do.
Well, specifically, the language would say, "Remove," or what would it say? Edit, or?
What I, what I would suggest is just do a revise.
Modify.
Remove to adopt or revise job description.
So you put everything and omit those three, four?
Do a red line, just like we do with your policies.
Okay.
So we mark out what you want out, put new language in, what you want in.
Didn't that what you asked, Miss Stacy?
Right.
I'm sorry, I haven't touched anything.
So instead of earned doctorate required, put earned doctorate preferred, for instance. And then instead of a minimum, three years as a teacher, just put, we can remove, you know?
I think we would just omit those three.
Oh, great.
If that's what we're suggesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys need to give direction.
Yeah, I want to.
If you don't, then we'll make the language change, and then we'll come back to you guys.
I would recommend removing the word "required" to "preferred," and then removing those three bulletins.
You moved them all together?
Or would you?
Yeah, I think she suggested taking them out.
Or we could make them all preferred, or just put experience as a teacher.
Just from, jump from, have a doctorate degree and not be a teacher.
Oh, we could, or just add preferred to all of them.
If you ask for, sometimes board prefer a hybrid candidate. That is someone who may have worked in corporate America and became a principal rather than a teacher, because the person has his and her certificate. So when we look for educators, if you, if, one of the questions we ask, you prefer a hybrid candidate or not, most of you said no. So which means we look with some, we look for people with background in education and educational experiences. And that cuts out the person who may have worked in corporate America and became a principal someplace and then a superintendent without any teaching experience. You know, so 99% of the people we look for, look for will have teaching experience and prior administrative experience at the building and the central office level.
So, Greg, we were saying possibly just put preferred on the three.
You can.
Yeah.
Yes.
That way it still leaves the criteria.
Yeah, that way it's still...
Prefer building administrator experience, prefer, you're not putting years on it.
Right.
Prefer that they have.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'm hearing two different things, so I want to make sure I get the language right. I'm hearing one thing where you're saying leave it in as the minimum, but I'm also hearing just take out the minimum and just say prefer experience as.
Yes. Yeah.
So if anybody wants that way.
Yeah.
But you're not putting them, you're not putting a, a, a...
A time limit.
A time limit on the, as long as you were a teacher, and as long as you were a building administrator, you don't have to, you could have been one year or two years.
We got people in our district.
I'm just asking.
No, but I'm just saying, we got that here, so, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, we're, I think we're in agreeance.
Okay.
That is preferred, because preferred gives us options.
Do we don't want to put a timeframe on the doctorate?
No.
Why not?
Because if they're in the process of completing their doctorate or in the, or just finished it, you know, to me, as they mentioned, that the best candidate may not have the credentials, but if they are in that district working it and it's successful, and they don't have it, I wouldn't want to miss something, miss that opportunity to get that great candidate in here, and just to have them finish a year or, or whatever the situation may be.
I like earned doctorate. Hello? Opinions?
For me?
I said I'd like to hear opinions from the board.
I don't have a decision, whatever we, the majority decide, I'll go with it. I think the preferred wouldn't limit us, and that's why we don't want to put limitations. My own little personal thing, there's a lot of folk with a PhD. That doesn't mean that they're the best, nothing against the people in the world.
Present company not...
I'm in agreeance, I'm in agreeance.
That's a fact, that's right.
Yeah, because you can have it.
Yes.
You may not be the cream of the crop.
So that's why it's preferred, not required.
Yeah.
So that's the difference with you, Madam President. If you say earned doctorate, what I heard you say, you wanted it required, right? Yeah, I thought they were gonna take it out completely.
Oh, no.
No, she's talking about preferred. A preferred to have, we...
It's a way.
Yeah, I like preferred on all of them, because...
But I do like the wider range of having...
Because if somebody's working on it, they're only a few hours away, or a few whatever. They're ABD. Yeah.
Yeah, we run a chance of not, not being able to, to capture that good one, because it's too limited.
Yeah, that's...
I think I do, but my shot at it's going to be earned doctorate preferred, just strike out the word "required" there, leave in the emphasis on education-related field preferred, but not required also there, right? And then on the others, just, well, do you, I guess here's, here's a question there, do you want that to also say preferred experience as a teacher, or do you want it to say you do want experience as a teacher?
I think it's preferred.
Preferred on all three of those.
Yeah.
Preferred experience as a teacher.
Without taking out the minimum of three years, so just say preferred experience as a teacher, preferred experience as a building administrator, preferred experience as a district-wide administrator, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That allows us to cast a wider net.
Now, do you want to put that someplace here?
Yes.
Well, we'll do the doctorate.
Okay, she said no, you said yes.
We don't need to put that, that now that it's preferred, just the doctorate.
Well, we, doctorate preferred.
Yeah, that's all we have.
And the other, the other ones, since it's preferred, it's okay. Don't have to put all of them in.
Yeah, just doctorate preferred, not required.
And this goes on the flyer.
So that'll need to be a part of our board meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Could it might tomorrow, perhaps?
You'll have it added.
Get that to office tomorrow, because we want to try to get this...
Well, our board meeting's at five, so we have to vote on it.
So it'll be Wednesday morning?
No problem, okay.
Unless you want me to send it to the board meeting.
No, no.
You're more than welcome to sit in the board meeting.
What is the board meeting, tonight?
Tomorrow.
No, you guys don't want that. I need to get back to New Jersey.
But it's warm weather.
Yeah, it's warm weather in New Jersey, plus I didn't bring my golf club to you. I had to throw that in somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I meant to distract everybody.
No, I'm glad you said something. I guess the next one's...
Yes, let's, let's take a look at the timeline, please.
I think you all have a copy of it.
The green sheet?
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to get salary, salary, we got so hung up on...
We were talking about the salary.
Doctorate, we didn't finish salary, I apologize. I was getting ahead of myself.
I think, Mr. Brown, you mentioned a salary or something, did you?
That's what I was talking about, doctorates.
He was, he was talking about a range.
Yeah.
When I got distracted.
Well, what if we said 150,000, just 150?
No, no, we didn't say...
They didn't say that.
No, I just said that.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty wide.
Yeah, but you can negotiate.
No, but I, I don't think you want to give 100,000 dollars one way or the other.
Well, I'm just looking at... I'm just using my past experience as a superintendent and a search consultant, normal range is more than 15, 20, 25,000 dollars. So that's a, that's why I think if Mr. Brown mentioned, I mean, 225 to 250, and as we were saying, anywhere in there, and I'm not saying you have to go with it, because just whatever you guys want to do. But that, that did come up last time we met, as a possibility, it was just a talk, it wasn't any, wasn't any vote or discussion on it. Because we handed out a sheet to you with the ranges on it, and look at it like districts in this area, that's what we thought was, that could have been suggested.
Yeah, it's on your, it's in your agenda. Since we're negotiating, I like 225 as a top, and then with those benefits, it would kick it up. But if you, if, if we stay in the line of 25, 30, 40,000 benefits, you're 290, and that's, that's out of range for this community.
So, so I'm thinking about...
In my opinion?
Yes, so districts of even smaller districts, Topeka Public Schools, two years ago, that's 13,000 students, urban population, and their superintendent was brought in at 250 with additional benefits. So I just, it's just, you know, you've got, you want to cast a wide net, you don't want to be outrageous in your salary, I understand that, but you also want to make your district appealing to those people who nationally might already be at 225 and might have had a tremendous amount of experience. So maybe you can look at the benefits side, because you're going to capture people with salary first, then they'll look at benefits. That's what will catch their attention first. Does that make sense?
We've seen those benefit packages being really...
So, so yes, if you...
In the last couple of years in this area.
So maybe that's where you, some of the searches that I've been on recently in this state and in other states, they look at the benefit packages, and they, they look at, like, the first year of the contract, it will be this. If you do the job that we expect you to do, and your evaluations are good, then we might increase a benefit, pick one, I don't know which one, to a little bit, you know, more compensation, rather than the base salary. So I mean, that's a way you can negotiate benefits as well, and make them accountable.
On the flyer, you don't identify the benefits?
We don't. We just say competitive benefit. You can determine what that is.
Later. So we're looking at base salary.
It's part of negotiating, right?
Yes. That's where I think folks probably have the most opportunity to negotiate is on the benefits versus the salary.
Blue Valley is only, if this is correct, 236, 17, 18.
So, you know, there's another piece to that, though.
The benefit package.
Yes.
And then that's, that's, that's now, we're talking about next year, talking about 18, 19, right?
18, 19 is 244, 244.
What district is that?
Blue Valley.
Blue Valley. Neighboring district.
Deep pockets, real deep pockets. Olafah, right now, is 250, growing. Shawnee Mission.
There's several ways you can negotiate your benefit package, by the way. Some districts negotiate a, an annuity of so much money, which is, which is good, and it's not paid, you get a company and they look at an annuity. So there are a lot of ways you can negotiate, and we can help with that, if you're attorney or whatever, but we can certainly help you from our standpoint to negotiate your benefits package down the road, we can do that, or your attorney or whatever you like to do. But again, we, you know, we, we suggest, I think what you're saying, Doc, we suggest starting at 225, plus an excellent benefit package, or you can say between 225 and 240. And that depends on the person you may get. If the person has experience and improving them herself, then that's fine. A little bit of experience, and you want the person to prove themselves, then you just go with 225 plus the benefits. And you got something to play with.
Based on experience, the set base salary is based on experience.
Based on the experience, yes.
Could be experience and education level, the doctorate.
Exactly.
So what's our number range? 225 to...
240.
240, 40. Okay.
That's one of them.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah. You got something to play with, then you got the doctor to play with.
You do, basically.
Years of experience.
Sounds like it's a consensus.
So at what point would we negotiate, what we would frame the benefit package?
Would we get down to our first interview date, probably you need to, that gives you time to look at what you currently offer in benefits, if you don't already know, to your current superintendent, and just see what about that you like, what you don't like, what you'd like to change. So maybe you could do that in executive session going forward in a couple of board meetings from now.
Yeah, we mentioned that there was some incremental stuff left to put in, and there...
So you need, this is Greg's question, you need to start thinking about it.
Yeah.
Start thinking about this benefit package?
Yes, start thinking about it, yes.
I'll send that came full man up.
Good, all right.
We, we need...
So on the flyer, we're going to put our top 10, just so we're clear, we're going to put our top 10 criteria that we've already talked about, we're combining one of the considerations with one of the criteria. We're going to put doctorate preferred, and we're also then in the salary range, going to put a salary range of 225 to 240 based on experience and education.
Because you already say that anyway, determined based upon tool and experience qualification.
Experience and education level. And that gives you the opportunity, that window, to negotiate. And then you're going to start thinking about your benefits package. The other thing that I want you to think about is, and you'll only do this once, is moving expenses. I think we may have talked about that early on, but usually there's an addendum to the contract, that very first contract that you offer your new superintendent, that because we're doing a national search, they could be coming from anywhere, that you want to be able to provide them reasonable moving expenses. So for some districts, it might be a dollar amount, not to exceed, this is what, with receipts, you will reimburse them this much in moving expenses. Or it could be, like, if you get three bids, and you'll, you'll reimburse the lowest bid. So just be thinking about that as well. Don't have to make a decision today, but it's something to think about, how you'd like to approach that. I also usually put language in, and your attorney, if he's doing this, would be the one to do this, but I also like to put in language that says the board will reimburse you for your moving expenses based on whatever model you like. And if you should not stay for the full length of your initial contract, let's say it's a three-year contract, and they leave at the end of year two of their own accord, that they, the board may ask them to reimburse the district for the moving expenses.
I like that.
Just kind of gives them a little skin in the game.
Yeah, I like that.
I don't know if you like that, but I like that.
I know, I like that.
Now, if you terminate them, it doesn't affect them.
Yeah, but I mean, I like it.
They leave of their own accord, yeah. So be thinking about that, too. All right, so we are good on the flyer. We will, do you want them to make a motion or?
Could we, could we, Madam President, so, so it will be official, a motion to?
To approve.
Fire with the changes?
The changes to the flyer?
As discussed.
So they, so that you can be printed and get ready to go. I'll take a motion for the.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. In discussion. Hearing none, and ready for the vote? All those approve?
Aye.
Those disapproving, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, can we take a look at the flyer?
Timeline.
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 I got it, we got it.
Timeline in my hand, right? Yes. Now, even though we're going to vote on it, that is flexible because we can't control what could or may happen in the future. But it gives us a week to work with. If you notice, there's stages, one, two, three, four, five. So it is normally the stage is beginning the week off. So it doesn't mean, doesn't mean the second of June, but during that week, okay, develop and finalize the interview questions and procedures with the board. So anytime during that week, we can figure out your schedule, be, be specific where it's going to be on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, those kind of things. So that's what you're proving the flyer, so we have something to count on. The other thing is, we, we try to have board members to arrange their schedules so they can be available these times that we need to meet, especially during the interview process going. We will try to have each of you or seven of you available for the interview process.
The, the one really important date on this timeline is the next time we would get together, and that is to look at the pool of candidates, and that's a four-hour meeting.
Right.
So we had tentatively scheduled it for June second.
June second.
Which is a Saturday. Which was a Saturday, yes.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Yes. I just want to make sure you all are still okay, because we need all seven of you available.
There's already.
And I think we had said we'd start at eight o'clock in the morning, is that what you recall? Okay. And we'll plan on eight to twelve, and we need to be in a room. Where do you go for executive session? Do you stay here?
We stay here for executive session. We can do it here, we also have a smaller room that we can use.
Yeah, we already have that on our schedule.
But I don't know, it might be a little crowded if we've got all the board members plus.
Two of us.
Two of us, plus a candidate, that might be a little crowded.
You wouldn't have a candidate then, you'd just have us? Because this is determining who we're going to interview.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. There's only one less person. And we need a TV screen.
So why don't we stay here?
A way to project a video.
We can stay here.
Fine, that's very.
I think that's easy.
And we already have that on our schedule.
Okay.
When we talked about that before.
Before we proceed, could you clarify the online application form? You'd never addressed that. So what, what does that look like?
We brought that to one of our meetings.
We did, but we, what we'll do, we'll send it to.
Send it back to you.
We'll send it back to Susan tomorrow.
It's a pretty standard application.
Okay.
The only one thing that some, some, some boards may not want on it is the first person that talks about, have you ever been convicted?
That's the first question? That's the first question?
Well, the first question.
After the initial.
After the initial application.
Resume information.
And most boards have that, but some boards, some states don't allow that.
We're okay. Remember, we talked about this.
Yeah, we do talk about that.
Yeah, all right, we just never addressed it, so.
Other than that, it's, it's pretty standard.
Got it.
Yeah, Susan, we'll just forward it to you.
So we have the second already on our agenda.
Then the next question would be the week of your initial interviews.
We have those, we have. We have the fifth and the sixth.
I mean, are you?
We have it on our calendar already.
Yeah, we, we did that.
Oh, wait, there it is, at five and at six, got it.
Yeah, we did that.
Unless we're in Topeka.
Well, I won't be here, probably. I might be here.
In special session.
Special session. Or the governor just yabbles us in to stay, you can't leave.
We've got interviews on here, too.
Okay.
Yeah, the fifth and sixth are interviews, right?
Yep. Five o'clock and six o'clock.
We got the fifth and sixth, and then on the interview, eleventh, thirteenth, and fourteenth.
So everything's still set.
But we got the fourteenth also.
Do we have the fourteenth?
Yeah, the fourteenth.
It's a technical.
Those were final.
It's either one of those up or the other.
We set those up before.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Fourteen.
Now, on your schedule, you don't have the fourteenth.
Right.
But we, when we last met, it was.
We did, fourteen should be on the schedule.
Was not on this one.
That's what I'm saying, we will, again, when you pull this, whatever modifications that we need to make on the flyer, for example, one of the days it says the twentieth that we should have done something, but today it's the twenty-third. So we can modify that, so we can say, because I think what we said at thirteen and fourteen, depending on what our needs are. Because it may be, you may decide that you don't want to see that many candidates. So we, but we'll add the fourteenth.
That's an option.
Okay. We'll say the thirteen and fourteen if needed. Thirteen and the fourteen if needed.
Does anybody see any other issues with the calendar, the green timeline versus your own personal calendars?
Again, as, as we say, if something happens with somebody in unforeseen, unforeseen difficulties, that we have to kind of go back and revise, it's, it's okay to one day to do it. So, you know, things happen, but I'll, we'll be in touch with Susan all the time to make sure we're on schedule with whatever we need to do. And we have to make those minor adjustments, day or two, three or four days, we work with you on that.
Which one?
I think we've got the salary, we've got the flyer, we've got the timeline.
What time is eleven? I mean, yeah, what time is that? Six, six P. M.?
We've done the district survey, we've done the district survey.
Yes, at the, see there again, five o'clock for the six, six. Yeah, I got that.
We need a vote on the timeline.
Yes, officially, we need a vote on the timeline.
So move.
Second.
Take a vote.
Okay, any discussion? Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, so move. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the last thing, we, we have the district info.
Yeah, I didn't saw that.
District review. You have any questions on that? It's information, I presented earlier, it's information for you to look at and see how the district is doing, what the people are saying. If you have any questions or have questions later on, you can go through Susan and get them to us, and we'll get back to you, whatever you'd like to do. Also, suggesting that, when you look at the, at the survey, look at what each, what the board member said as opposed to what the parent said, what the student said, and how you came up with the bullets. That's interesting information, see how you chose one and how the, how the students or the teachers may have chosen the same bullet.
Do you think over them? No, not here, not back on this one.
Oh, compared to that one.
The kind of last thing we would tell you is, because you've approved the flyer, we've got the timeline now, everybody's agreed with dates, we will post the job tomorrow with the flyer, with the qualities of the next superintendent for Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, and it will be open for thirty days.
Wait a minute, excuse me.
Yes.
We had to vote at the next meeting tomorrow, so it'd be Wednesday.
Right.
I'm just corrected there, so.
Right.
Because we had to vote at a meeting tomorrow, so we posted on Wednesday.
Yeah, you could send, you could basically send it out Wednesday morning.
Right, okay, Wednesday morning, thank you very much.
That's okay.
Thank you, I forgot.
That's all right.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll keep it open until May twenty-fourth. Do you see that deadline for all application materials? So that job will be open from about the twenty-fifth of April to the twenty-fourth of May, so it's twenty-nine days versus thirty, but it'll be fine.
The twenty-fourth will be fine?
Yes, May twenty-fourth will be fine. To tell you the truth, most of our applications come in the last week. It's just like homework assignments. They give me three weeks to do it, they'll do it the last three days. So, so what we do in the meantime, you know, you don't see us until June second, so what we'll be doing is vetting candidates, doing reference checks, comparing the applications to your profile, doing that social media piece where we look at all these candidates and make sure they are who they say they are, and there's nothing out there that would embarrass anybody. And it's a, it's a pretty time intensive. We could, we prepare a report on each candidate that we believe might be a good fit for your district, so it takes quite a bit of time.
And each week, we will update Susan on the number of applicants you have.
The only thing I would tell you is quantity does not always speak to quality.
Right.
So even though you may have fifty applications, out of that pool of fifty, you may not have, you know, but maybe ten qualified candidates.
Right.
Which, you know, it's true of almost every search I've done.
Okay.
Was there, did you hear their written report from the community input sessions? The themes? We have some bulleted points on the themes, is that what you're thinking? I just didn't know, I didn't get one that if you. We haven't passed anything out. Would you like to see that?
Yeah, I wanted to know what they said.
Okay, I've got that right over here. This is the, the themes. So the focus groups, when you met with people and spoke to them, these are, there's a typo on this, and I should probably give somebody a candy bar for finding the typo, I found it. I didn't type a typo, but I did find an English teacher and they found it.
Is that a manual?
Yeah, he's got, they're coming around. Here you go, my extras. All right.
I want to give this to Susan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Here, huh? Sure.
Oh, sure. I was in here for the focus groups, I think you would probably have to speak to that.
Yeah, you look at the focus groups, it was amazing as to, first of all, what the students made concerns. Some of the students' main concerns had a lot to do with safety. They were concerned about, the fellow students, so they were concerned about dropouts, you know, the dropout rate. The teachers were concerned mainly about discipline. And everybody talked about finances. This is a thing from across the country in terms of finances and budget issues that districts are having across the country. But if you look at this, the strengths in the community, look at student focus, diversity, relationships, collaborative, I don't want to read this to you, but you can see it. Look at it, if you have any specific questions, then we can, we can talk about it.
And remember, these are just people's perceptions, and I don't think you had a huge group that came to those stakeholder meetings.
The largest group I think they had are fifteen people at one.
Just about every group.
And the students, the students, we had thirty, thirty, thirty students. But we averaged about fifteen, some we had maybe five, most of them were about ten, twelve, fifteen.
So are these a list of responses?
Uh-huh.
Are these listed responses or categories of discussion?
Yeah, categories of what people mainly talked about, what the groups talked about. You know, what they were, what their main concern was, because remember, we asked the same questions of each group.
Like the strengths question is, what do you see as the strengths of the school?
What's good about the district, what's good about the community, those kinds of things. And that's what they were saying. For example, if you look at the community, they said, you know, diversity, almost everybody said strong diversity with, with, with community culture, pride and history of the community. Critical issues they said the superintendent would face, you can see that, finances. They said new board doesn't work together, they, they talked about that, they talked about critical issues that the superintendent would have to face. So these are things, again, it's folks' opinion, so you can't, don't look at this and say, wow, this, these are factuals, this is how people felt. And depending on how somebody may have awakened that morning, before coming here, you know, if they had a, or had a, a bad day at home, and we know what bad day at home means, that may, it may mean a bad day all day. So don't take these like, oh my God, they think we're terrible, no.
Well, you know, personally, this might be the point.
Okay.
They've said that about us, which is not true in the way they perceive it.
Okay.
So that's just.
And that's the same, it's perception also.
Yeah.
Yes. That's why, you know, it's how I.
So I'm not surprised if that's by design. We get that, we understand.
But listen, listen, I've been around long enough to see, or I'm sure we have, to see boards, they have knockdown dragouts. Literally knockdown dragouts. Come on, I'll take you on outside and we'll. Yes. It really, it's, I cannot believe some of, some of the board members, but that's, that happens, you know, it's a big country, and you know, some people, boy, they just say. But is there anything else, Madam President, are we okay? Are we ready to move forward on everything that we talked about?
Oh, man, it's clear.
Any questions you still have about the process we need to clarify for you before we walk out the door? You're not going to see us again until June second.
But like we said, we'll vote on changing the, tomorrow, and the attorney will notify you and get that flyer out then.
Yes.
You're working with them with the flyer?
Yeah, the, right, the flyer was created by a staff internally, so, yes.
Okay, so once we make the changes or whatever, she'll get that to you?
Yeah.
Senator Kelly.
Yeah, that kind of.
Would it be beneficial or detrimental to keep us posted on how many have come in? Or do we just wait?
We'll do it, it's fine.
I think it's beneficial.
Yeah.
Because, again, we, if we look at application, we look at twenty applications, we find that there are ten of them that nowhere close. We, we, we will say, you know, you got twenty applications, but we see ten good ones, that kind of stuff, we, we do that.
I think it's a good thing, so you know that the process is moving forward. I, you don't want to be surprised about anything, I think that's good. I like to give you more information.
Right. And the other thing is, sometimes, it should not happen here, but we've done searches where at the end of the five, five, five weeks, you got fifteen applicants. And that's a very, very low number for what we used to. We used to seventy, sixty, seventy applicants, even, even though several of them may not be.
Quality.
Quality, quality applicants, we have that. So we do look at them close, and we'll go through them each, every other day, we go through to see who else. You know, because they'll go out, the flyer will go out to our associates, and they will contact people who may be interested, who have jobs. And again, as we said earlier, we don't look for somebody who does not have a job. We look for people who are, who are, who are employed. And if they're not working, they got to have a good reason why they're not working, they can't be out of a job a year. And if they're not working, they got to have a good reason why they're not working. They can't be out of a job a year and a half. Because, you know, things changing with parking and everything. If you've been out of the system, not doing anything with education for a year and a half or two years, you may not know what's going on.
Because most people have already settled in where they're going to be.
Right.
And it's just what it is.
Well, you also know on people that are desperate. So if they haven't been in education for a year or two, why do they want to come back? So we're always a little.
Hesitant.
Suspicious.
Yeah, very suspicious.
I'm not hesitant, I'm suspicious.
And there's a lot of baggage out there too.
But they've been in prison for two years.
We know that. We know that.
They do the background check.
And actually, your finalists, you know, when you get to the point where you've found, let's say, two individuals that you want to consider as finalists, we do criminal background checks on them.
Yes.
So we'll know, we'll know that.
I'll bring up one question that the board may or may not have as a question, but I've got as a question. In terms of timing and everything, is it your recommendation to look at an interim ready period of time or not?
We don't know yet. I mean, it doesn't hurt to be thinking about it.
Well, I just, June's going to be too late to identify an interim, in my opinion, because budget's got to be approved, you know, in July. So if we're going to be interim in place, timing's going to be kind of necessary. So we probably, so we probably won't see you guys again until June.
But we'll be in touch with you.
So I guess my question would be, when I, when I hear the word interim, I think of several months. Are you just thinking of several weeks?
We have to have a superintendent in place July one.
Right.
But we also will have budget meetings and other things that will be, be approved in July, where if we don't have somebody who has participated in the discussions in June, it's going to be hard for them to act as superintendent for July. If you think we're going to need somebody.
So you have.
In my opinion. So that, it's really a board decision. I just am asking if you guys have experienced what you think, one way or the other.
Usually in a district this size, if I might jump in, in a district this size, you usually have folks in central office who can step up to be your interim during this timeframe. They already know your budget process. They know all the organizational structure. And there's nothing, I mean, they can step off immediately to do that interim position. But I would only do that if they weren't applying for this job.
And the other thing is, we, we can, we can assist you with an interim.
For just a few weeks.
Even in, even in Kansas, we look around at people who have retired, recently retired, and we say, listen, we need somebody for the next state over. So we can assist with that. We talked about that. And then looking at our applicant pool after the twenty-fourth, of May twenty-fourth, we have an idea of the good candidates who would fit this district. And if that becomes a problem, we'll let you know that you're going to, you know, we may want to work with you or just have you select an interim. But as Brenda said, if, you know, if there's somebody in the district, if they're, if you're an applicant, and people know that you're applicant, your interim isn't applicant, that's kind of, some people are not going to apply, because they figure the interim has a shoe in. So that's another idea that we suggest that if you have an interim, you want to bring somebody who's retired, who's not thinking about applying for the job. Because again, with a timeline, interview in June, we're going to have to, we probably have, as I mentioned to you before, because superintendents who are working, they have to get either sixty or ninety days. Sometimes the districts will let them go. Sometimes the district say, no, I want you to stay here sixty days or ninety days. So that's, so that may be an issue, but we can talk about that down low after we get the applicants in.
Look, just playing devil's advocate, you're saying that if you hire somebody and they're going to have to have sixty to ninety days, that's telling me that we're going to have to have them.
That's what I'm saying. And that's normally the case. This is okay time, because if somebody decided to leave their job June thirtieth, you know, they can use a couple of vacation days or a couple of weeks to just clean things up or come over here. And as we said before, you may, depending on where we are, you may have to have an interim for six weeks.
Well, you definitely have to have a superintendent though, July one, based on state law here.
The state law, right. And that's, that's state law in most states. You've got to have somebody acting or interim or something.
So what I'm, so what I'm hearing is the board doesn't get an interim. Is that what I'm hearing?
Needs to have one of these.
Do you want to have somebody in line, just in case?
To fall in in case we don't have some.
Yes. If you want to have people lined up and say, listen, you know, we may not, this process, because if you hire somebody June eleventh, and they can get out of their job, it's fine. But if they can't leave until sixty days or thirty days later, so yes, what we would, what I would suggest is you have somebody lined up, two, three people. Would you come and be our interim? Somebody in Kansas, somebody across the river, whatever. But we, again, we can help you identify, looking at people who have gone through our searches, and people who have retired in the area of Missouri or Kansas.
They got to have a Kansas license.
What I mean?
Kansas license, yeah.
Got to have Kansas license, right.
Traditional funding too.
That's what?
You're going to have to pay.
Well, you.
We don't pay for that.
What, your interim?
Their license.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to pay the salary.
Yeah, they pay their salary, but, oh no, they're going to volunteer their time.
So, so if I, I mean, you know your district certainly better than we do, so, you know, the first choice, if it works for you, would be to have somebody internally who already knows the system, who isn't going to be applying for the job, to be your interim during, let's say, the month of July. Is your current superintendent staying until the end of June or staying until June what?
Contracts of June thirtieth.
But sometimes people take their personal leave or annually.
That's a discussion we need to have.
Do you know?
No.
I don't know. She's not there.
Oh, Susan knows.
Until June thirtieth?
But if her contract goes to June thirtieth, what does she take?
I think, I think the clerk said that she'll be here until June thirtieth. Okay. So I would say realistically, you need somebody during the month of July.
And then if they're starting July one, we really need somebody in place before that, because you can't have them start and not know anything about what's going on. I mean, that, that's, that's why I'm trying to have the discussion now, because you guys aren't going to be back in time to have the discussion later. Is if, if you're going to have to have an interim in place July one, they've got to have some overlap with the current superintendent. Otherwise, they're not going to know anything about what you have going on.
If they're from outside the district, yes.
Yes. If they're, if they're from outside the district. If they're from inside the district, that would be. So. Great for thought with the board, that probably means you're going to need to make that decision then.
Yes.
So can we schedule that on, on, what about our board meetings in May?
Yeah, you just do that regular board meeting. I'm just telling you, don't lose sight of that, because May's going to go really quick.
Do the schedule the way everything is.
Right.
Yeah, I don't want that at a regular board meeting.
What?
I said, I wouldn't think that you'd want that discussion at a regular board meeting.
It's a, I mean, I'm not saying you have to, I'm just saying.
We're talking about hiring somebody.
On a regular board date. Yes. Because it might be. Personal matters, you know, like the personnel.
Yeah, probably an executive session.
Oh, yeah. We have May the eighth is our first, first board meeting in May, so we get to come up and do something.
I'd say your first board meeting in May was appropriate, don't you think?
Yeah.
I think you better have a discussion about it at that first board meeting, whether you make a decision or not.
Well, think about it tonight. We'll discuss it tomorrow, what we got to do, because we got to make a decision, because this time's moving fast. We got to have them in place, knowing that they'll be willing to do it.
So you, are you proposing that we would have an executive session tomorrow to discuss?
May eighth.
I think you said May eighth.
May eighth.
May eighth.
Okay.
That's it, be thinking about it so we can.
Okay.
Okay?
And then if we did need help or wanted a recommendation.
Yeah, just give us a call.
How long would it take you guys to give us?
It'll take, it'll take some, you know, a few days, because we have to reach out to people to see if they're available, if they're interested. Would they, would they be willing to come forward? And if so, what would, what would their compensation look like? What would they require? So it takes a few days, make some phone calls.
Okay.
Not weeks, just a few days.
Okay.
In fact, that's our only meeting, board meeting in.
No, you have the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Oh, there it is. I didn't see it, because of graduation. Yeah, I forgot.
So it seems like we probably want to make a, a decision on that May eighth meeting, because the May twenty-ninth is very late, in my opinion.
But if we're talking to someone already, we'll make a decision.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we wait until May twenty-ninth to tell them we need help, and they need more time, that's going to just.
But I think the thought process was, on May eighth, an executive session, have a discussion about the interim. And if you need help from them or from somebody else to help you find somebody after May eighth, that call May.
Okay.
And you're probably looking at taking some kind of action on the twenty-ninth, would be my guess, or in June, first week in June.
I'm just saying, that's very late.
If we had to call a special meeting in between there, we could, but we'll go with that route.
We have a special one in May, a budget one, I think it's like the sixteenth or something. Let's get a way to add it on there if you need.
Yeah.
I finished, so we don't have anything other than graduate five hundred, reach five hundred. But anyway.
My recommendations, have a, have a discussion on May eighth.
Right.
What you do.
May eighth, we'll do the discussion, Susan. An executive.
So, so we do meet on the fourteenth.
And we have a special meeting on the fourteenth.
As I'm saying, if we wait.
But we'll, an executive session on the eighth, we will.
Personnel, executives.
Personnel.
So, good.
Any other thing to come before the board that we need to discuss?
No, I think that's it. We will begin to look around right away, and, you know, before your May eighth, we'll see if we can just tell you where we are, if we've contacted anybody that you may want to look at. We'll put you through that.
We'll be there tomorrow at four. We'll have the IV students.
In the back.
Having their reception, and then the twenty-twenty leadership kits are going to have their projects set up, so keeping them ready, that'd be great.
Well, four, one's at four and one's at four. It's two different things going on. One's at four and one starts at four fifteen.
We previously had informed people before, I'm filling in this. I know that it is a cost associated with, would we, would you be able to get those numbers or what was going to say that before?
In the, in the past, you'd be retired personnel.
Was the compensation the same?
Could find out.
Okay, if you share that, so I would know, that would be, or we would know.
Right.
We would know.
In that discussion, we would have to know what is paid to the interim.
Right, just so I can have.
It's typically about the same way. It's the same, it's typically about the same as what you pay compensation for the superintendent.
But you would have probably that amount of insurance and da, da, da. Do you offer the benefits?
It's usually just the pay, although it could be benefits, because particularly if somebody retired, they don't need some of those benefits. If it's somebody that's in house, you just give up their salary to be commiserated with what a superintendent's salary is.
Well, we need to know the details, Gregory.
I'll give you the best I can. But places vary on that. I mean, you know, the community college had an extended period of time, for example. They just have a separate contractor.
Drop some options. That, that's your job.
I will come up with options for you guys. At least you deserve the way to pay for it.
Are you, listen, go ahead. She's going to make this. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So sit. Okay. Thank you.